Good evening. It is Thursday, January 18th, 2024, and I would like to call this meeting to order. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to announce that the Board met in executive session prior to this meeting to review the personnel report, a special education settlement agreement, and student stipulations. The meeting lasted approximately 30 minutes. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Christian.
First item, item three, we have the oath of office for Mrs. Rashida Randle. We have our notary here, Lynda Turner. Rashida, would you come forward?
All right. Congratulations and welcome to the Board.
Thank you.
Moving on, this is a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented in 4B through 4F, which includes Board Business Meeting, Special Meeting, Reorganization Meeting, Special Meeting, and Finance Committee Meeting. May I have a second, Sharon? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion to approve the financial reports as presented in items 5B through 5M for November 2023 and December 2023. May I have a second? Rick? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. The Treasurer's Report. This is a motion to approve the November 2023 and December 2023 Treasurer's Report. May I have a second, please? Chris? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And now we will move on to public comments on tonight's agenda. Are there any public comments this evening? Okay, seeing none. Superintendent's Report, Dr. Christian.
Thank you, Mrs.
Thank you, Mrs. Petruzzo. Item 8, 8A, and 8B and 8C. Motion to approve the Personnel Report and Extracurricular Contracts as outlined in 8B and 8C. Board action is requested for the recommended personnel changes. Appointments for promotion, employment, or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification, documentation, and state mandated requirements.
May I have a second, please? Gail? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion to adopt PSBA's Principles of Governance.
I have one before that.
Sorry.
That's okay. Item D, School Board Directors' Recognition. So, there is a proclamation in there, but I'm going to speak without reading the proclamation. Being a member of the Board of School Directors is a selfless act. There is no salary, although some people think that there is. You volunteer your time, and you volunteer your time to make sure that the students of Colonial School District receive quality educational opportunities on a daily basis. And you're mandated to do that with fidelity, and I have the utmost confidence that this Board will continue that tradition in Colonial. I've been proud to be a member here for nearly seven years and part of this Board. And you also take care of our faculty and staff through challenges and through a variety of mandates that we have, often are some are unfunded, and you support our community as well. And we appreciate your selflessness, and we appreciate your volunteerism, and we're here to recognize you. Next month, we will be giving you some Colonial swag, but we're around the community, as is our practice. And so Lynda and I will be in contact with your preferences. But thank you for your service to Colonial School District, and we're looking forward to a great school year this year and into next year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So that leads in well into our next motion. This is a motion to adopt PSBA's Principles for Governance and Leadership as outlined below. In recognition of School Board Directors' Month, the Colonial School Board of Directors resolves to formally adopt PSBA's Principles for Governance and Leadership. In doing so, the Colonial Board of School Directors recognizes the value of adopting and adhering to these guides to help the Board run efficiently, ethically, and in the best interests of our students. Therefore, the Directors will individually and collectively resolve to: advocate earnestly, lead responsibly, govern effectively, plan thoughtfully, evaluate continuously, communicate clearly, and act ethically. This is a motion. May I have a second, please? Will? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And now I will turn it over to our student representatives.
Good evening, Dr. Christian, School Board members and community. Thank you for continuously allowing us the opportunity to provide the monthly school student report. To begin, on December 8th, Concha Hockin Elementary students enjoyed a visit from author and illustrator Kevin McCloskey. Colonial Elementary would like to give a special thank you to Mrs. Nina Protowski for arranging this visit for our students. On December 14th, Concha Hockin Elementary's 3rd Grade Coyote Chorus performed for their families and peers. Mrs. Walls put on a fabulous show about winter. On December 15th, Colonial Elementary's Helping Hands, led by Mrs. Baker, Mrs. Cosgrave, Mrs. Carter, and Ms. Joka, made winter decorations for seniors at Lee Towers. On December 21st, 3rd Grade students celebrated their pre-New Year's Eve gala at the Great American Pub in their ballroom. Concha Hockin Elementary wants to give another special thank you to the owner of the pub, Mr. Chuck Hempshire, for providing this special space free of charge to Concha Hockin. On December 22nd, Concha Hockin held its cross-grade level pack party that focused on the "choose creativity" characteristic of being curious, meaning learning new ideas and trying them out. Students then, with their pack leader, made snowflakes which were hung around Concha Hockin Elementary to show both their curiosity and creativity. Lastly, on December 22nd, Concha Hockin Elementary was notified that they had been awarded a $10,000 grant from the Morgan Stanley Foundation that will be directed through the CSDEF. This grant will go towards the Decodable Texts in Classroom After-School Sports Club and additional materials to enhance the self-contained autistic support classroom at Concha Hockin Elementary. Big congratulations.
Teachers at Whitmarsh Elementary are currently working on completing mid-year assessments on all students. Progress monitoring data will be used to make adjustments to gain groups and ensure that students are receiving appropriate levels of services and instructions within our small groups. Reading groups will be updating using all of the data collected to ensure teachers are meeting the individual needs of our students. Data collection is also used at our Child Study/Core Team meetings to discuss students that may need extra remediation in a certain area. Last month, first trimester report cards and progress reports were distributed, and parent-teacher conferences were held. Classes participated in a holiday drive by adopting a child to donate clothes and toys. Our PTO sponsored a holiday shop in the evening for our students to do their shopping. Our Life Skills class prepared and served lunch at their little chef's eatery. A chorus concert was held for families, and a school sing-along was held prior to the winter break. Our 3rd Grade students had a field trip to the Da Vinci Science Center, and our 2nd Grade students had a field trip to the Franklin Institute.
During the first week of November, Ridge Park completed their first No Place For Hate activity. This year, One Book, One School. Every class read "We World Needs More People," "More Purple People," and participated in grade-level activities. On November 21st, all Ridge Park students participated in the first Panther Pride Day. Students were able to choose different activities across the school to participate in. Some of the activities that they chose from were directed drawing, dance, chalk the walk, yoga, exercise, glitter art, and bingo. 3rd Graders, who are a part of the Ridge Park Chorus, performed on December 14th for their families and 3rd Grade peers. They did an excellent job. Many thanks to Cindy O for her efforts to make this a joyful and fun experience.
On Wednesday, December 12th, Plymouth Elementary had their first-ever Panda Pals event. Students were all assigned to different teachers throughout the building. The Panda Pals groups are a mixture of students from Grade K to 3. During the events, students meet with their teacher, leader, and group to participate in a school-wide activity. The purpose of these events is to build community and a sense of belonging by grouping students with teachers and other students that they may not otherwise get to know. The students and teachers enjoyed their first Panda Pals event, and there will be an additional meeting during the week of the Great Kindness Challenge. On December 15th, 2023, the 3rd Grade Concert, under the direction of Mrs. Tracy O'Shea, performed their winter concert. Families were invited to attend the concert and watch students perform a variety of different winter songs. It was a fantastic performance. On Friday, December 22nd, 2023, Plymouth Elementary students participated in our annual Chop Pajama fundraiser. Families were able to make a donation to Chop, and all students were invited to wear their pajamas to show their support for Chop. This year, we raised over $2,000, thanks to all of our PE families. From January 22nd to January 26th, PE will participate in the Great Kindness Challenge. We're looking forward to it.
During the week of December 11th, parent-teacher conferences were held at Colonial Elementary. Soon after that, report cards were sent out on the 14th. The Colonial Elementary School Winter Concert was held on Wednesday, December 20th. The students were amazing and played in front of a full house. Lastly, CES Cares went on a shopping trip to Target to shop for families in need.
Colonial Middle School's annual Brain Show competition for all grades took place on Friday, 12/22 before winter break. Students had a great time competing with their colored teams for the prized Spirit Rally trophy. Teachers got in on the fun as well. The Student Council also held a Drink/Snack fundraiser to help contribute to the end-of-the-year field trips. CMS Band and Orchestra performed their winter instrumental on the 19th of December. CMS's students put on an incredible performance with the guidance of Mr. O'Neill and Mrs. Derowitz. Many of these students will be onstage again on January 23rd with the Monca Band Performance, which is hosted at CMS. Speaking of Monca Band, 20 students from Colonial Middle School will participate in the Montgomery County Middle School Concert Band Concert on January 23rd. Middle School Monca Band is comprised of select 7th and 8th Grade students from six middle schools in Montgomery County. I'm really sorry if I butchered your name, but congratulations to the following Colonial Middle School students for being selected this year. 7th Graders: Piano Kawi Cheo, Gianna Shear, Noah Levin, Matzfei Pilawski, Sasha Maisy. And 8th Graders: Janiney Saunder, Brandon Tapchong, Will Sharnav Gitten, Lilian Hildreth, Talia Wine, Zach Schwartz, Andrew Canavy, Weston Fittipaldi, Beckham Dorsey, Vinnie Hallman, Taya Cooper Smith, Owen Ward, David Hayman, Ben Genesco, and Rebecca Coit. Additionally, CMS is very excited for the Choral Extravaganza at CMS on the 30th of January at 7:00 in the auditorium. Rehearsal is also underway for our 7th and 8th Grade Musical, Camp Rock, which will take place on March 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. Our girls' basketball teams completed great seasons shortly before winter break, both finishing 2nd place in postseason play. CMS Art Club is extremely excited about a new project that their staff and students will begin working on shortly. They will be completing a mural inside the school store. Thanks to Ms. Horwitz and Mrs. Robinsky for their leadership on this project, in addition to Mr. Lally and the Facilities Department for all of their support. We're also grateful for Dr. Messina and her collaborative effort as a school store manager to make this exciting project a reality.
Plymouth Whitmarsh High School's band, chorus, and orchestra students had a wonderful winter concert on December 12th and highlighted their efforts throughout this past semester. Underclassmen students at PW went through Keystone Testing the two weeks following our winter break. Congratulations to Jaden Colesy, a varsity basketball player, for scoring 1,000 career points. Several students across the district participated in a day of service this past Monday. There were many student-led stations, and the day was well-spent volunteering for several good causes. The Plymouth Whitmarsh International Baccalaureate Junior Class is holding a Pickles For The People Pickleball Tournament and fundraiser, which will go towards Meals on Wheels. This will be held on February 9th. Families and inexperienced players are welcome to participate or watch, and information is located on their Instagram, which would be @picklesforythepeoplePWHs. Good luck to all students starting their new class rotation next semester, and we are all looking extremely forward to finals next week. Thank you all. This is the conclusion of our January 18th, 2024 student report. We are looking forward to the next half of this year. Have a nice evening.
Thank you both. Just if the Board noticed and the public noticed that in each of the school updates, you'll notice the emphasis on service learning. And so, always been a strong tradition in the district, but we did ask our principals this year. We always have goals on student achievement. We always have goals related to safe and caring environment, but we asked them to add goals related to service learning and to really emphasize not only the current things, the traditional things that each of our schools do, but come up with additional ideas to serve our community and connect with our community. So, they'll continue to highlight those efforts, and we appreciate you guys mentioning it. Thank you.
Okay. Now we will move on with new business. First, this is the appointment of the CSDEF Board Representative. So this is a motion to appoint Gail Plant as the District's Representative on the Colonial School District Education Foundation Board. May I have a second? Rick? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And then this is an appointment of the MCIU Board Representative. This is a motion to appoint Mark Marsico as Colonial School District's Representative on the Montgomery County Intermediate Units Board of Directors. May I have a second? Will? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Gail?
This is a motion to approve the Educational Service Contracts for the 2023-2024 school year as outlined below. Blue Quest Therapy Speech Language Pathologist services at $140 per hour. Severinson Virtual Sign Language Assistant services at $150 per hour with a subscription fee of $300. The Vanguard School tuition for one student in the prorated amount of $50,088.64. And MCIU, the Anderson School, Expirations Educational Services for one student at $39,550.
May I have a second, please? Rashida? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Chris?
Motion to approve a settlement and release agreement. Due to student confidentiality, this agreement was reviewed in the executive session prior to this meeting.
May I have a second? Sharon? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Motion to approve the Board policies outlined below on a second-read basis. Policy 146, Student Services, and Policy 236, Student Assistance.
May I have a second, please? Gail? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Rick?
Motion to approve the transfer of $5.75 million from the General Fund 10 Unassigned Fund Balance to the Capital Projects Fund 37, and $6 million from the Committed Fund to the Assigned Fund, $3 million, and the Capital Reserve Fund 32, $3 million. With the close of the 2022-2023 fiscal year and the acceptance of the audit report in November, the District's Unassigned Fund Balance totaled $17,838,440, which is approximately 11.8% of the annual 23-24 budget. Comply with the State's Unassigned Fund Balance limit of 8%, the administration is recommending the transfer of $5.75 million from the General Fund to the Capital Project CES Renovation Fund. In addition, the District has $6 million of Committed Fund Balance, which was the committed portion to cover future COVID-19 pandemic-related expenses. Administration recommends moving that $3 million of this Committed Fund Balance to the Capital Reserve Fund for future construction projects, and the $3 million to the Assigned Fund Balance to balance future year's budgets.
May I have a second, please? Sharon? Any questions or comments?
Do you want to highlight the why that moves around?
Yes, as you indicated, the General Fund Unassigned Balance, it was in excess of the 8% threshold for PDE, and as such, we need to move the $5.75 million out of Unassigned in order to fully fund the upcoming CES renovation project. Administration is making the recommendation to transfer that money to that project to fully fund that project. And that way, moving forward, we can, when we collect the bids, we have a fully funded project account for that. In addition, within the Committed Fund Balance of the General Fund, there is $6 million that was earmarked for the COVID-19 pandemic. As we work towards coming out of that pandemic, we are now looking to utilize those dollars in a more advantageous way. $3 million of that will go to the Capital Reserve Fund to assist with our capital improvement plan looking out five years, and then $3 million of that will go to the Assigned Balance to help mitigate tax increases going forward to the next few years.
And that Capital Reserve Fund includes things like new roofs, improved HVAC systems, all things that would improve quality of life, quality of working conditions for our employees and for our students. So, later this spring, we'll go through, annually, we go through all the five-year capital projects, and so we make sure that everything that we have qualifies for those types of expenses.
Correct. Yep.
Thank you. All in favor? All right, thank you. Chris?
The Colonial School District Board of Directors set the start date for the 2024-2025 school year at the September 21st, 2023 Board Meeting. Board approval is requested for the K-12 calendar for the 2024-2025 school year as presented.
May I have a second, please? Gail? Any questions or comments?
One clarification. There's an item on here that says no school for teachers. I assume that's no school for teachers plus students, August 30th.
Yes. School for you.
Just for Board members. All right. All in favor of approving the calendar? Thank you. I know, I assume we will put that out to families. I know there's been a lot of people asking for that already for planning vacations.
We will publish.
Thank you. Chris?
Motion to approve instructors in classes for the Plymouth Whitmarsh High School Adult Evening School Winter and Spring 2024 Sessions as outlined in that attached memo from Jessica Lester dated January 17th, 2024.
May I have a second, please? Will? Any questions or comments? All in... The question is if people are, Board members are teaching some of the classes?
Like you did last year.
And so is Gail.
Oh, and Gail.
Okay. Okay. All in favor? Thank you. All right. Gail?
This is a motion to approve Anthony Spirano as interim principal at Whitmarsh Elementary School from January 2nd, 2024 through February 14th, 2024 at a per deemed rate of $650.
May I have a second, please? Jeremy? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Chris?
Motion to approve the stipulation agreements for students #28933 and 27504 as presented and reviewed in executive session.
May I have a second, please? Rick? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Sharon?
It's a motion to approve the conference requests outlined below. Beth Lynch, PW College Counselor to Syracuse, February 6th to February 8th. Again, Beth Lynch to North Carolina State Counsel Fly-In, February 27th to the 29th. Liz Morris, PE Reading Specialist, to the PA Federal Program Coordinator Improving School Performance Conference in Pittsburgh from February 2nd through the 7th. Jennifer Ramsden, our friend Amy Campbell, as well as Denise Marx at the same conference. And then Catherine Geir, PW Foreign Language Teacher, to the Northeast Conference on the Teaching of Foreign Language in New York on February 23rd.
May I have a second, please? Will? Any questions or comments?
Just that Plymouth Elementary and Concha Hockin Elementary are being recognized at that conference for their outstanding growth and achievement this past year on the PSSAs and obviously throughout the year on our local assessments as well. And they'll be presenting, too.
Perfect. Congratulations. All in favor? Thank you. Solicitor's Report. Mr. Saltanik?
I have no report.
All right. Thank you. Now we'll move on to our committee reports. Chris?
No report.
Curriculum? Sharon?
No report. The meeting was canceled due to inclement weather earlier this week.
Facilities? Will?
I have no report.
Thank you. Finance? Rick?
Finance Committee met on Monday, January 8th. The Board discussed the transfers of the fund balances voted on tonight. Board also reviewed the 23-24 budget update with revenues and expenses tracking in accordance with budget. There was a first look at the 24-25 budget. Revenues are projected to increase by approximately 1.98% compared with an expected increase in expenses of 4.43%. At the current projection, a 3.49% tax increase would be required to balance the budget. That generally is the highest number, and it generally goes down from there the last couple of years.
All right. Thank you. HR? Gail?
No report.
Thank you. Chris?
No report for the tech school.
And Mark is not here for the IU. Sharon, do you have anything?
Just want to name that April 26th is the annual Legislative Breakfast that the MCIU holds for educators, so invitation to all of us here and to our colleagues to show up, especially given trends in funding and things along those lines right now. I think it's important that we show up and speak to our legislators.
Thank you. Legislative? Anything else? You put it, sorry.
No report.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Not yet.
And municipal community liaisons? Any reports? Okay. Gail? Foundation?
No report.
For your information, attached to Board Docs are the Athletic Activity Account Report, Activity Accounts, Building Reports, and Curriculum Reports. And now, closing items. Is there any public comments this evening? Please come up, state your name and residency.
Yeah, Robert Franz, Wildflower Drive, Plymouth Meeting. I've got two short items, but I'd like to give a public service announcement. The Red Cross needs blood desperately. If you can donate, please look for your local drive. You might even get a nice shirt like this. They're giving long-sleeved shirts in the wintertime. I have a nice I have a nice collection of these shirts. Giving blood is very simple, very quick. I've given about 115 pints. So please give if you can. About 15 years ago, I believe, you put solar panels on the high school, and now I noticed I went on Google Earth and I found that this building has solar panels on, the high school has solar panels on. It seems to be the only buildings in the school district that has it. How has that worked out?
Initially, it worked out very well for many school districts, but when deregulation occurred and the cost of energy dropped, then it wasn't as profitable to continue. That's why it's only on a few buildings.
I just curious. The other thing is I know that a while back, there was quite a blow-up about antisemitism that hit the school board directly. I would just like to say antisemitism is horrible, but you should be allowed to criticize policies without being labeled anti-Semitic. About 15 years ago or so, I got into some pretty interesting forums about the conditions in the West Bank, and it didn't take long before I was accused of being a Holocaust denier and being anti-Semitic. Policy disagreements with policy is First Amendment rights. Doing something like they sprayed at the Jewish American Museum is not free speech. That is hate speech and needs to be prosecuted. But it's a slippery road going down, especially if there's a very vigorous lobby that wants to cut off any debate that has anything to do with what Israel does. And it's important that antisemitism and anti-Islamic behavior be condemned, but a vigorous and respectful discussion be allowed.
Thank you for your comments.
Are there any other public comments this evening? Okay, seeing none. Are there any board comments this evening?
Just in case anybody in the audience or did not get my voicemail yet, we're anticipating, again, some inclement weather. So everybody got a traditional snow day earlier this week. Tomorrow is a flexible instructional day with, make sure you log on, interact with your teachers will be watching. The early part of the day should be light snow, and so the heavier snow is coming in the afternoon when there's asynchronous activities. So if you need a break from doing your homework, you can go out and help your parents and guardians shovel the driveway, and I hope everybody has a very safe weekend, and we are still in the middle of winter. So hopefully we get a little break next week.
All right. I just wanted to say thank you to Jess Lester for, again, leading our successful day of service. I know our students had mentioned the day of service earlier, but thanks to Jess for leading that effort.
And thank you to Mr. Lally and his team for doing a great job earlier this week when we had the first snow day and making sure that our campuses were safe for students to return. So thank you. All right. Anything else from anyone? All right. This meeting is adjourned.